February 2021, PCOS and City School Board Meeting to Order. First up is Cassidy with the Pledge to the Flag and Inspirational Reading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, I will be reciting to you a poem from the French poet Victor Hugo. He wrote: "Et puis il y a ceux que l'on croit, que l'on connaît à peine, Qui vous disent souvent une phrase, vous accordant une minute ou deux mi-heures, Et change le cours de votre vie." This translates to, "And then there are those whom you meet whom you hardly know, who you tell a word, a sentence, who give you a minute, maybe half an hour, and change the course of your life." Thank you.
Thank you, Cassidy. Next up is Student Presentation, and that is a video presentational C T. Very well done. Can't say enough about Career and Technical Education. Thank you all so much for that. Any additions or modifications to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
And next is Recognitions with PCOS and High School Senior of the Month, which is a video presentation.
The February Student of the Month is Lauren Messerschmidt. Lauren is a hardworking and driven individual and an exceptional student who has performed well academically during her time at PCOS and High School. She has been an active member of multiple clubs and honor societies at P H S, to include National Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, DECA, S D A, F C C L A, Student to Student, Leo Club, and Key Club. Lauren has competed as a member of the PCOS and High School Academic Child's Team as well as the Varski Sailing and Softball Teams. She also volunteers at the Peninsula Community Chapel Sports World as a summer counselor. Please help me in congratulating Lauren Messerschmidt as the February Student of the Month.
Thank you, and congratulations, Lauren. Never ceases to amaze me accomplishments of our students and all their involvement. For presentations and reports, first up is reopening the schools update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and PCOS and families. As you're accustomed to, we'll do a, we might do, an update. This is a chart you're fairly used to seeing by now. It is a bit condensed, but there's really good news in these numbers. As you're aware, we've been reporting these numbers since July, and they've been all over the place, quite honestly. But really problematic around the holidays, those numbers skyrocketed all around the peninsula and certainly here in PCOS. And you see the significant jumps. We go all the way over to the far right, you'll see our rates of cases of COVID per hundred thousand in a 14-day trend. Right before the holidays, right after the Thanksgiving holidays and before the Christmas holidays, you see those numbers jumped almost 2,000 cases per hundred thousand, and that was significant. We started to see a decline, and that decline has continued. And we're not out of the woods yet. But when I start seeing 500 cases per hundred thousand, I'm starting to feel like we're climbing out of this thing. If you'll notice, our P C R has dropped to 12.4 as of today, and that number is around where it was before the holidays. So that's a good sign for us here in PCOS and around the peninsula. So as you know, we monitor these numbers closely. You're going to hear a little bit about the new guidance from the CDC in a few minutes that we're going to be looking at numbers a little differently moving forward with this new guidance. As you also know, we agreed some months ago to start publishing COVID cases in our schools as requests from families so they could see exactly the numbers of any positive cases in our schools broken out by school. And again, we don't like to know anybody getting COVID in the schools, but those numbers are extremely low when you think about we're having well over 2,000 people come to our campuses regularly and have had numbers, significant numbers in our schools since the beginning. So these numbers are tracked from when we started collecting numbers back in August. So again, they're fairly impressive, low rates. Had a lot of questions come in after the governor's comments, call to reopen schools back a couple of weeks ago. We, of course, listened to all of that presentation and then followed up with the Virginia Department of Education and their guidance from the governor's call to reopen schools. It's important to note that this is, his message was intended to encourage school systems that have not had in-person learning in school all year to start planning to do that. He set a benchmark of the 15th of March, encouraging schools to have some level of in-person learning by that date. And you can log on, and we've encouraged folks to do this, to the Virginia Department of Education website, and you'll see a map there that's color-coded. And you can see the, just the dichotomy all over the state of Virginia out of 132 school divisions, the number of schools that are gradually starting to reopen. When we started back in September, we were kind of Lone Rangers out there. There were very few school systems in the state of Virginia that had in-person learning going on, none on the peninsula. And that number has grown, thankfully, because we believe from the beginning, and a lot of schools are realizing that the best form of learning for most of our kids is in-person. So that trend is good, and we are proud of the fact that we have over 70% of our students learning in-person. Now, it's not as often as we would like, but it is, in fact, in-person learning on a hybrid model, and which we've been doing since the beginning. Hot off the presses, the CDC announced late Friday evening new guidance for schools, specifically for schools around the country. We were really hopeful, as we've been planning, to get some guidance that was more definitive for the social distancing piece of this, and we'll talk more about that. I know you all are well aware that that's been, you know, our hang-up in PCOS and, quite honestly, of moving forward with bringing additional students in, is the guidance from the CDC and the V D H and our local health department on that six-feet of social distancing. And again, we'll talk about, as we have many of the details with that. But we were hopeful that, from some conversations we were having around the state, that there would be some movement to loosen that restriction a bit, based on some of the science from other school systems in other states as well as other countries. There's some really good science that's come out, some good studies about schools in the United Kingdom, for example, that have had kids in school for some time exercising shorter distance of social distancing and have found not significant spread. So I would encourage folks to look at these studies, but our challenge is we have to follow the guidance set by our health officials. And that starts at the Center for Disease Control and comes down to the Virginia Department of Health, and then we get specific guidance for our community from the Peninsula Health Department. And we've, you know, discussed that over the last several months. And we meet with these folks regularly, and the guidance is still very hard at six feet. And the CDC guidance that came out Friday evening reiterated that. There was really no movement on the six feet. In fact, it was pretty emphatic throughout that document that's lengthy and in great detail. However, I'm going to talk a little bit about some possible movement that could happen in the next couple of weeks with some conversations with the Virginia Health Department. This information is being reviewed by the Virginia Health Department as we speak. We were on a conference call with the state superintendent this morning. He's going to be bringing in members from the Virginia Department of Health and the American Association of Pediatrics, who are weighing in on this conversation in our conference call next Tuesday. So I'm hopeful to have more information after that about whether there is going to be some movement in this social distancing guidance or not. So we anticipate those updates as early as next Tuesday. These are the essential elements, and again, this is a multi-page document. I'd encourage you to go to the CDC website if you're really interested in some detailed read. You'll see a lot of information. We've tried to pour through that over the weekend and try to compare it to the guidance we've been getting over the course of the year from the V D H and see where this guidance is different. And there's a couple of key elements that are different, but the social distancing is not. The universal mitigation strategies are still in place in highly stressed masking, handwashing, respiratory etiquette. And I, you know, you guys are probably tired of hearing me talk about the contact tracing, but I believe strongly that those numbers from a few slides back with very low numbers of COVID cases in and among our school family are directly in correlation to our contact tracing work that Ashley Ryer and Antonio Fox lead for us. These, that work is enormous. And some school divisions are kind of waiting as cases happen for the Peninsula Health Department, which is inundated with this contact tracing. We started immediately, and these folks work nights, weekends. I just can't tell you how much we appreciate their work. And I do believe it's paying off, is keeping our folks from spreading this virus around in our school environment. The other major difference that the CDC is now moving from the 14-day trend data to a seven-day model. If you remember, early on when we were publishing this data, we were collecting it daily. So we were actually looking at daily transmission rate and daily positivity rates early on when we were making these presentations. And then the CDC moved that guidance to a 14-day trend data. So you're looking at it over a 14-day period of time, and you can start to see the ebbs and flows in the community of what's happening. You'll remember, a few meetings ago, we had a spike in a local nursing home, and that skewed our numbers significantly. So if you look at our graph, you'll see this November jump, and then it went back down to kind of the normal trends that we were seeing. Well, this is to capture some of that in a seven-day trend. So the CDC has moved in this direction. You also remember this chart was, had five categories. A very low, which was in green. They've taken the very low and consolidated it to four categories and color-coded with the blue, which is where we all want to get, which is low transmission, up through, up to the high in red. And it just cuts the numbers in half. If you're looking at a 14-day trend versus a seven-day trend, we were up around 200-plus for the red. Now that's dropped to 100 over a seven-day trend. It's just simply cutting it in half. So you'll notice those numbers. We'll be reporting that out at each of our board members. And of course, this will be, as V D H starts this week to update their website in unison with the CDC guidance, they'll shift to this model. So you'll get a seven-day trend, and we're using that language over four categories. I won't read this slide to you, there's a lot of information in it, but this is just the five-point guidance from this new model from CDC. And the reason I'm not going to dwell on this is this really doesn't deviate from what the V D H guidance has been for us over the last several months. We've been encouraged to prioritize learning over the extracurricular, but in PCOS and we've been able to, at least through the winter sports, balance that. We ran winter sports, as you well know. We did have some cases of COVID from playing other teams, but those cases were handled and mitigated quickly, and folks were quarantined, and we didn't see a spread around our athletic programs in the winter season. We have been publishing this, the Number Two bullet, for some time, that the studies and all the evidence indicates that there's much lower incidence of COVID-19 among younger children and suggests that younger children are likely to have less risk of transmission than older children. We have been talking about the need for virtual learning for families that have pre-existing conditions or folks who are more prone to this virus at home. And schools are encouraged, as we have, to cohort students and to encourage podding with families. We've been encouraging these things and seeing these things work pretty much over the course of our experience with COVID this year. And we are waiting on more information about this bullet, number B, letter B. There, in the new guidance, there's whole- In the new guidance, there's a whole section on testing, encouraging schools to consider screen testing. Now, we've been doing the testing with, in conjunction with the Peninsula Health Department for possible exposure, encouraging families to go get tested if there's a possible exposure. But this is screen testing. There's a lot of information we don't have about that, what this costs, how we would plan to screen test large numbers of kids in our buildings on a regular basis, because you don't test them once. You'd have to test them weekly for this to have any real impact. And then there's a turnaround time on some of these tests, two to three days. There are some rapids that can be analyzed quickly, but we just need a lot more information. So more to come about B, but it is a big part of the CDC new guidance, encouraging screen testing. And then, of course, C, we'll talk a little bit more about, and that's vaccination of our staff. We are very excited about the fact that three vaccine clinics were conducted here in, actually in Hampton, in conjunction with the City of Hampton, of course, Pecosin City, and the Centerra Health Group. They partnered together to create those vaccine clinics, and we were able to vaccinate 85% of our staff the first dose. And we're expecting the second dose possibly as early as next week. But we're pretty confident we'll have our staff fully vaccinated by the end of the month. And that's really good news, because the particular vaccine that we got, the Moderna product, is still holding steady with the latest studies out there, at 95-plus, 14 days after the second vaccination, when folks are fully inoculated. The numbers, again, like I said, are impressive. About 85% of our staff chose to, or were allowed to, take the vaccine. Now, we do know that some folks were advised by their physicians, because of health conditions and such, not to take the vaccine at this time. But we are feeling really good about those percentages. We also were able to vaccinate a high percentage of our substitutes, earmarked food service contracted employees and our custodial staff, and our non-staff coaches, folks who contract with us to coach. So we're feeling really good by the end of the month, that we'll have our folks fully Fall sports, we're already underway, and our families are excited. I've gotten good feedback from our high school about the plans underway. We had a meeting this morning, actually, with Coach Bennett and Principal Syak about the plans for fall sports. So we'll be getting those underway very soon. And we still have some folks competing in the states to come for wrestling and swimming. So we've got some folks still competing. So with these condensed seasons, there's not a lot of downtime from one season to the other. So we're hopeful that our guys run out and win all the trophies in wrestling, and then get back here in time to get suited up for football. So we've got a lot going on in a short period of time, but our families are excited about fall sports. This is something that you have probably heard in social media and on the news media, and certainly from the governor and his presentation a few weeks, talking about year-round school. There's lots of talk about this on a national level, and we will certainly be engaging the conversation, because there's, I believe, you never rule anything out. You talk about it and find out what's best for our community. But right now, there's no way for us to launch a year-round school model, certainly starting now. Our teachers' contracts run out in mid-June, and we would have to find a barrel of money to extend their contract to work through the summer. However, we do have some federal money that we will be able to receive very soon, and a portion of that money will be earmarked for remediation, to start addressing the learning loss that's been presented to us by COVID, starting March 13th of last year, when our schools closed. And for a lot of our kids, the combination of virtual and blended learning and the hybrid and all these things have not worked as well as we would like for them to stay caught up. For some kids, it's working well, and their grades are holding up, and they're learning at high levels. But for a large number of our kids, there have been some gaps presented by this. Our goal now is for our teachers to start, in very great detail, identifying these gaps individually with our students. And then start having the conversation with parents about opportunities over the summer. This money that the federal government is awarding us will allow us to spend, it's not reoccurring, so it's got to be used now, to address this learning loss, beginning immediately this summer. Not just your traditional summer school, which we've offered in Pecosin for years and have had good success with, but we're talking about opening up a summer academy for as many kids who will come. We'll provide transportation. We'll create an intense five-week program that will help address the individual needs of those students, especially in reading and mathematics. We'll offer credit recovery, and even original credit-earning options for our high school students. We'll be able to extend opportunities for enrichment programs, like Camp Invention, which I'm told is a really, really cool program that's been going on here for a few years. And we'll have options in-person and virtually. We plan to have small numbers, ratio to teacher. So the students should have 12, 13 kids with one teacher, giving an opportunity for kids to get very individualized attention and intervention and remediation during that time. And of course, we will have a virtual option for students who are not ready to be back in the environment with other students. So I'm excited about Summer Academy. I'm hopeful a lot of families take advantage of this. We're going to be sending out a lot more information in the coming weeks about preparation for Summer Academy. Next steps. The question we get most often is, when are you going to bring all our kids back? I get two emails a day, minimum, and some days, lots of emails. And I don't mind it. I appreciate it. I'm a parent. My kids are grown, or they're trying to learn how to adult. They're not quite there yet, still on my payroll. But if I was a parent of a school-aged student right now, I'd want my kid in school five days a week. School is the healthiest place for our kids to be, and we all want that. When I call and communicate with parents, when they send me an email, I usually pick up the phone and give them a call and say, you know, "I agree. I want everything for your kid that you want for your kids." And the challenge for us is, how do we do that and still comply with the guidance from the folks that we are required to follow? If we had car problems, you wouldn't want to come to me and get advice on how to fix your car. I'm not a mechanic. But I could probably point you to a couple of folks who could give you really good advice about that. I'm also not an epidemiologist, and so I have to rely on, as do all folks in these positions, where we're taking care of the health and safety of other people, the experts. The Virginia Department of Education requires us to follow the guidance of the state and local health officials. And right now, that's six-feet of physical distancing. We're all hopeful that that's going to change, and we can start to reduce that amount of physical distance. And when that does happen, we will be ready. We are already starting the planning of what that will take, and it's going to, I'm going to show you a list of things that we'll have to do to toggle from a hybrid model for students to a more full-time, in-person model. It's going to require lots of things. But the next step for us to move into that direction is some loosening of that six-feet requirement. And I'm stressing that tonight, because of the, I would say, 90% of the emails that I receive of feedback, questions, and concerns, is about that question. How can we get more kids in school? And the answer to that, very simply in Pecosin, is three feet. That's the answer. And as soon as that happens, we're going to go through all the things I'm going to show you. We already started this process, so we'll be able to go. We'll be able to load kids on buses, bring them to school, and have a more traditional approach to education, and we do believe that's the best next step for us. As we've said over and over and over again, you know, our goal has always been to bring all of our students safely back to school as soon and often as possible. Now, all of this comes with the mitigation we've been talking about. That's not going anywhere in the short, immediate future. We've all had our fingers crossed that these things that we've been doing are going to get easier. Masks, which are not much fun for kids to wear all day long, but I don't see that changing in the next few days and weeks. So those mitigation strategies are going to be in place until they're not. And so those are the things that we'll have to continue to do, but the thing that's keeping us primarily, we can do that. We've been doing that, from bringing more kids back more often, is the social distancing.
I've got a quick question on that. So the South Side Health District has said three feet, and Chesapeake's been back. Hala White's starting back Monday, pre-K through 5. So has anyone from the, like, the main state people said it's allowed for Peninsula people and South Side people and the western part of the state people to be different? I mean, if one school system can do it, the whole state should be able to do it.
Totally agree with you. We've asked that question over and over again, and we can't get a direct answer about why we're advised one way and another school division can be advised a different way. Return-to-school plan that the VDOE set out in the summer said that you have to look at your local health guidance, because each community is different. It's why the state made the decision to let local schools determine when to bring kids back in. The thinking was, might be different in the mountains. They might have low weight rates of spread, and therefore, their health division can say, "Bring kids in," and these are the mitigation strategies that will work with you. I understand the concept, and that is that each community in a state spread out like Virginia might have different things going on in different communities. So they allow the autonomy of local school divisions to decide, in conjunction with their local health department, what is best for that community health-wise. The challenge for us is, we've been notified in writing from our local health department that six feet is the answer. We were hopeful that we were going to get some movement on this. We've been having conversations with the state superintendent and others to try to get some guidance from the Virginia Health Department on this. And then this thing came out on Friday afternoon from the CDC. And I'm afraid, I'm just being candid, that that may have slowed this process, because that guidance is so emphatic, six feet. There's no mention of anything less than that, and anytime it mentions social distance, it actually says of six feet or more. So I'm less, I'm less positive about it right now than I was Tuesday or Wednesday of last week. Although I'm still hopeful that when this conversation happens between the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Department of Health next week, that we'll get some guidance, and maybe that guidance will allow us some autonomy here. But that's a very good question, Mr. Freeman, and I, I don't know how to answer it, except that, you know, we've been advised to follow the guidance in writing of our local health department, and we've endeavored to do that, and have done that consistently from the beginning. It is very much a challenge when other divisions do it differently. Now, I do want to mention Chesapeake just for a moment, because I happened to have been on a conference call where the superintendent of Chesapeake shared some of their strategies and what they're doing, and told the whole group, all superintendents in the state, that they had, close to 50% of their families chose fully virtual. So that is a numbers game. If they've got 50% doing virtual, then that means they've got 24 and 1/2 kids in a classroom. I'd have had Pecosin kids in school day one. That would have been a no-brainer for us. We can put 12 kids safely in all of our classrooms with no problem. Putting 20 kids in those same classrooms is a whole different, whole different animal. And we have been to all of our schools in the evenings, after the teachers have gone and the classrooms are empty, and moved desks around in all kinds of ways to try to find every square inch and every desk composition that you can, arrangement, to try to get as many desks in there, and still comply with the guidance of six feet from the health department. So we're ready to go, and these are the things that we are doing as we speak. We're working on, Mr. Papas and the Transportation Department are already looking at transportation for how we can get all of our kids back and transport them. We're looking at instructional shifts. We're looking at classroom preparation. I already shared that with you. We know we've got to meet with all of our students with special needs and adjust their IEPs, as we did, if you'll recall, back when we toggled from fully virtual to hybrid. Those IEPs had to be adjusted. Now they have to be, will have to be readjusted to bring more kids in on a more traditional schedule. We've got to look at how we're going to do health screenings in the morning. Right now, we're taking temperatures of half the students each day. We'll have to take temperatures of all of the students each day, or at least 70% of them who return for a full schedule. We've got to look at additional cleaning requirements. And, you know, there's just lots of things that are happening as we speak in preparation for when that guidance changes, when it shifts, and we do hope and believe that it will. We want to be ready, so we can notify families. This is the transition to more full-time, in-person instruction. And of course, it's important to know that we'll phase this in like we did before. We'll start with our most vulnerable and youngest students. I hear often how challenging it is to teach a kid to read over a device, and I am sensitive to that. I certainly understand that. My little sister's a kindergarten teacher, and she fills my ear full on a regular basis the challenges of trying to teach kids to read virtually. But, so we'll start with that group, but we will work very hard to bring all of our kids back as quickly as possible, and we believe we can do it this year. But it's going to take that movement, that evolution in guidance from the health professionals. Questions on that? Because I know that's, you're hearing a lot of those questions as well. Any other questions? Thank you.
Next up, operations update with Mr. Papas.
Good evening, School Board, Chairman Carter, and Superintendent Tillot. Short and sweet, most everybody wants to really know what's happening at the middle school, so here's a few pictures. Safety meetings, which they're having every day. See, they were taking apart the lockers down here in the lower left. Of course, the weather has enabled us to see what four-wheel drive can do. And the ceiling tiles were removed throughout the building. Upper left here, you see all the lockers are now gone. In the right, it's hard to see, but that is the auditorium. The ceiling is down. In fact, the entire auditorium is the world's largest dumpster at this point. The demo crews are going through, they're, you know, removing the lighting as part of their bid. of their bid, you know, they reclaim and reuse as much as they can, but there's a guy working on that, and the ceiling is being removed. So here in the upper left, you actually can see where the lift, below the lift, you can see where they've already cleaved the auditorium, which is that section with the large arched windows, from the original nineteen thirty structure. And that's what all of these images are kind of showing. The one in the bottom right is you're now in the school, you're standing in front of the balcony, and you're looking straight up, and you can see daylight there. And then window inserts, I got to pop the windows out and do some work with those, and then those are going to just serve to hold something in place to keep the weather out. Mr. Jimmy, who lives across the street, didn't like my trees very well at the back of the chorus room, and they're out, he should be very happy. And then here you can see the first section being demoed, which was part of the chorus and band room. And there you see it there. And then today, I just stopped in there, and, you know, they're hosing it down, because that's part of what you do, just to keep everything settled, that they're disturbing, so they keep spraying it, and as long as it stays wet, it's great. And it's just another structure, you can see that they're ready to now rip into the actual auditorium. And that's the status. Fences are going up as we speak, they should be done either the end of this week or early next week, for the lay-down area for all of their equipment, and it's moving, it's here. And that concludes my operations report.
Thank you very much, sir. We don't have questions.
Go on.
Hit it, run. There you go. And Dr. Fox with instructional update.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Scheeler, School Board members, and Mr. Tillot. My update for you this evening is some information on SOL testing. This slide is just a review of the twenty-seven applicable SOL tests that students in grades three through twelve take typically each year. Students in grades three through eight are measured in reading and math each year, and students at the high school take SOL assessments in the courses for which they're registered. So this is just a quick reminder of what's out there and what we do each year. If you recall, two years ago, we presented information to you regarding significant changes to the graduation requirements and the accreditation process. One of the most significant changes was to the number of verified credits that students were required to earn in order to graduate. So your current seniors who are graduating this year are under the old model, they're the last class to be under that, and they are required to earn either nine or six verified credits, depending on their diploma type. The students in grades nine, ten, and eleven are in the new system, and they're all required, regardless of diploma type, to earn five verified credits, so one in English reading, one in English writing, one in science, one in math, and one in history. And if you recall, a verified credit is when a student passes not only the course but the SOL that's accompanying that course. And if students have already passed the required number of verified credits and they're sitting in an SOL course, they're not required to take that SOL anymore. So for instance, if I'm a junior and I'm in chemistry, I've already earned my one science verified credit, I don't need to take the chemistry SOL. And just, you'll see the asterisk there, just a reminder, again, in that conversation a couple of years ago, we also, there were some additional federal accountability pieces that were added for requirements for students, so not only required for graduation, but for state accreditation and then for a federal accountability. And I share all of that with you very quickly, just as a review to get you where we are today. So there are currently no waivers that are being given excluding students from SOL testing this year, so we will be testing. Students are required to test under secure standardized testing conditions in the presence of school personnel. And this means that all students, including those in our Pecosin online program, will need to be present at school to complete the required SOL tests in grades three through twelve. We do have the option to award students a locally awarded verified credit under the emergency guidelines when they meet specific criteria, and those are for our high school students. And expedited testing is still an option for students, it's on the table, so that hasn't gone away this year. So what does that mean? This year, there is one significant change of note, and that is, because of COVID-19, parents do have the option to refuse to allow their child to participate in the SOL testing program. Normally, if a parent chooses that option for their child, the child receives a score of zero, and that's recorded on their record, and the zero counts towards the school and the division's overall testing data scores. However, this year, the student will be assigned a score of NS, or no score, and it will not result in the school division, or the school or the division earning a score of zero for that test in any testing data. We want to make the point, and all of this will be communicated very clearly to parents, that parent refusal does not remove the graduation requirements for some assessments. So for example, you have to have English eleven, reading and writing to graduate. If a parent chooses this year for their child with the refusal to not take the English eleven writing SOL, the student will still need to take that SOL before they graduate. We will have opportunities in the fall and in January for that student, should they choose not to take it this year. And we will have a process for parents, if they wish, they can submit a parent refusal form to indicate that they do not wish for their child to participate in an SOL assessment this year. So communicating all of that, it's quite a bit of information, and it is unique, especially at the secondary level, to the student and the courses that they're registered in and the courses that they've previously taken. So we're currently meeting with school administrators, our school testing coordinators, our school guidance counselors, excuse me, school counselors, to review this information in detail with them. Our secondary counselors are meeting with parents and students to review their academic and career plans, which will highlight their verified credit process, so they'll know exactly what they need and what they don't need in terms of moving forward. We will also share detailed information with all of our teachers, our parents, and our students in a variety of formats over the next couple of weeks. Parents will also receive a specific email with information on how to complete the parent refusal form if they wish. We anticipate that it'll be running through Power School like all the other forms that they've completed this year. So that concludes my report this evening, Dr. Carter.
Does anybody have questions there? The LADC, does that carry the same weight as...
Yeah, it's just a, instead of the state awarding the credit, we can choose to award it locally if they meet certain criteria.
I assume that criteria is laid out.
Yeah. And there's a panel, we have a panel of people who review it for the student to make sure it meets the criteria before we award it.
If I heard you correctly, when you said that parents' refusal to allow their child to take the SOL will not have any negative impact on us, is that correct?
That's correct this year. Normally it does, normally that zero is equated in, when they, you know, we show you every year the pass rates, if there's a refusal, that counts as a zero in that average. This year, that will not count, nor will it be on the student's score report as a zero, and that's important to note, too, it'll show as a no score for the student, not as a zero. You're welcome, thank you.
And I lost my spot. I guess we're public comment. Ms. Reimers, do we have public comment tonight?
Yes, sir, we do. We're going to start off this evening, we have Ms. Kristen Jones to come up, please.
Okay, and I would like to remind everyone that per board policy, please limit your comments.
Yes, mhm. Thank you. I'd like to begin by applauding the time, thought, and efforts of the school board, administrators, teachers, and all of the Cosin City Public School staff through these unprecedented times. My daughter's live and virtual teachers at both PPS and PES are absolutely knocking it out of the park this year from a teaching perspective. So I am definitely not here to criticize the past state of affairs. We have all made the best of the virtual learning environment over the past year, and I do further acknowledge the external restrictions in place and outside the control of PCPS. I am instead looking ahead, most particularly to the start of a new school year. I do not believe students are meant to learn long-term through a computer screen, I think we're all in agreement, it sounds like. I'm not sure I know many adults who I believe are truly meant to learn in that manner. Speaking only from my firsthand experience with our primary and elementary students, I believe our youngest learners need to see a fresh start in the fall, and I am speaking in very early advocacy for face-to-face learning and a regular and predictable schedule. The current learning options for our youngest students force a choice between two equally important but exclusive matters, a regular and predictable schedule or face-to-face learning and interaction. The Pecosin online virtual option, of course, offers a predictable schedule, which is certainly essential for our youngest learners. That said, the all-virtual option lacks the opportunity for any face-to-face learning. What about social learning, social cues from the classroom? Arguably, some of the most important learning at these youngest ages is completely lost through a computer screen. The hybrid option, while limited, does offer this face-to-face interaction, but these children are expected to learn on a different schedule every single day. Even my third grader often has to be reminded in an early morning fog what she's doing for school today. Is she in the building, at home on meetings, at home on recorded videos? With predictability comes confidence, and there is unfortunately not much predictability that can be offered under a hybrid schedule. To a different and final point, on a few rare occasions due to scheduling matters, my first grader has done virtual learning with another first-grade peer. We initially worried about distractions, however, we found the exact opposite to be true. I witnessed a tremendous difference in behavior, attitude, and receptivity to learning, even with just two true peers working through the same lessons together. Virtual, particularly asynchronous days, for our young learners often bring distraction, constant reminders to stay on task and focus, and by noon, many of us have an emotional child on the edge of tears over any small problem or conflict. However, I saw, when working with a peer, I watched each child observe the other, getting their work done, and kind of refocusing without a complaint. An overarching concept of these times is we're in this together, and I think our young students can only feel like they are in this together with peers they can observe firsthand. The social learning and social pressure to stay on task and stay on schedule in a classroom cannot be replicated virtually. I thank you for your time, for all you have done, and for all you continue to do for our PCPS family.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Ms.?
Mr. Andrew Dowd.
My name's Andrew Dowd. I've talked to a lot of you, a lot of you. My daughter is dyslexic, and she is not learning what she needs to learn. My frustration has gone through the roof. We need to get these children back in school. I have another daughter in primary school, first year kindergarten, hate it, never had a problem with this kid in school. I don't understand why we're letting a guideline stop us. It is a guideline, it is not a requirement. On top of that, there are other ways to go around these requirements. I've talked to other school districts outside of Virginia, they've used physical barriers, Plexiglas, they've run what we run on the I-POP schedule for their other students in primary schools. These children can't learn at the primary school level on a computer when they barely even know how to use them. I'm asking you guys to stand up and do something for these children. You guys don't understand what it's like to go home and watch your kid cry, because they just don't get it, they just don't. You want to teach a kid how to read? Teach a dyslexic kid how to read over a computer. It's just impossible. I'm asking for you guys to do something. We do have the option. The governor said that every school district should be handled differently. I don't care if you guys say that we're grouped in with Newport News and Hampton, we're different, we're smaller. We can make something happen. COVID is here to stay, whether we want to admit it or not, so kicking this can down the road is not going to help us. We're talking about summer already. These kids need something today. I appreciate everybody that talks to me on the phone all the time, I really do. I really think we're on a first-name basis by now. I want you guys to do something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, School Board. First of all, I want to thank all of you, all teachers and staff, custodial workers, everyone who works in the school system, I thank you for all that you do. My mom's an educator, so I understand the struggle that she goes through whenever she's having to teach kids virtually. So my name is Ren Henchy, and I'm a senior at the high school. I am here to address my concerns about the plan for the continuation of the arts at Pecosin High. First, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I am the SCA secretary at the high school, I am a member of the National Honor Society, and I'm a member of the International Thespian Honor Society, and I've been a part of six theater productions, whether that be competitive one-act shows or school musicals. I am also the dance captain for the Competition Evolution Show Choir. Since the Return to, since the Return to School 2020 has started for high school students, I was looking forward to the start of various theatrical activities, but we are week five into in-person learning, and none of these activities involving the arts have started back up like I hoped. Why haven't these activities started, but both boys and girls basketball have started along with wrestling? Wrestling and basketball are close-contact sports with competitors face-to-face without mask usage or the practice of social distancing. Although I'm sure it's not your intention as a school board, it appears that the board values competitive sports competition more than it, more than it values the several established art programs at the high school. I hope the board will consider and allow competitive show choir, VHSL one-act, and the production of a school musical to occur this spring, as well as band concerts and chorus concerts to be done virtually or in any way possible. The activities that I am personally involved in may not involve a bat and a ball, but they are just as valuable to my high school education as those involved in sports. Currently, there are seventy-five students enrolled in a choral class at the high school, and about ninety to a hundred that are enrolled in a band class. The Pecosin High School Choral Department, under the direction of Mrs. Wade, proactively purchased what's called a singer's mask, and I brought it up here with you. Every day I go to school, and I have a B-day learning, I bring this mask with me. It is a larger mask that allows you to breathe easier, so whenever you're singing, you can take a deep breath, and you aren't sucking in the mask I am doing right now. So it's a mask designed to allow the wearer to sing in a safe and comfortable manner. Just like the spring sport seasons, last year, the Spring Musical, The Little Mermaid, was canceled just a few weeks into rehearsals due to COVID. Also, last year, the competition season of show choir was cut short, also due to COVID. Along with the spring sports that were cut last year, we mourned the loss of our events being canceled as well. The only difference here is members of those sports and programs and local citizens demanded their sports to start back up again, and they have. Many actions were taken by my peers, there were petitions started, and a few high school students stood right here and vocalized their thoughts and opinions on why competitive sports are crucial in their high school experience, and the school board took that very seriously. Well, I'm here in the same spot as my peers, and I hope you, the school board, will take me just as seriously. I hope your future actions will show that this, will show the school board cares just as much about activities involving singing, dancing, acting, and instruments as it does sports. My interests add value and meaning and enhance my high school experience, too. As a board, I hope you will continue to keep in mind the arts programs, continuing to build on the foundation you've already created. Please don't stop in your plans to get as many students in school in the activities students are involved in. Thank you.
Theodore Bosiani?
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. I am a, I'm here as a concerned taxpayer, as long as, as well as a parent with children in the Pecosin School District. I agree with everyone else that has come before me, so I'm not going to beat the odds at all. No, I won't. I just have some issues with what's going on in the district. I understand that there are concerns, and I have been explained by you all, and, I'm sorry, of what's really going on. CDC is giving us guidelines, Virginia Department of Health has given us guidelines. As gentlemen... As the gentleman said, though, they're guidelines. I dealt with guidelines. I dealt with unions. I've had, you could give my history later on, issues to deal with school boards. The school board has to take consideration of the taxpayer and the child. The school board, it's a business. Education's a business and no longer a calling. We've learned that. Unfortunately, it's what it's become. But these kids have to get back. We have to get these kids back in sooner or later. I like the idea of Plexiglas. You need a hand? I'm retired. I'll come out, help out. I'll give you my time to do whatever needs to be done to work in the schools. We have to get the children back in the school soon as possible. They can't be learning over, you know, the internet. As much as some are doing well, they're not going to excel. We can fight the CDC. You can go ahead, and as Pecosin will back you up. We will be behind you. If you go in front of the Virginia Department of Health and say, hey, listen, we have to open up. Give us different guidelines. Give us different guidelines. You have to just go out there, you know, you say your hands are tied. Okay, break your shoulder, bring it over your leg, and then chew your ties off. It's just a mental thing that you have to deal with. Okay? So, with that said, I don't want to take any more of your time. I yield my time to anybody else that has something, you know, a little nicer to say without me being angry and, you know, being discourteous to you. As the gentleman said right here, you have to bring the arts in. We're doing sports. We have to do arts as well. It's very important. It's very important for everybody. We need to be a well-rounded school. That's why I moved from New York to here, and I want the school to be the way it was when we first got here. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
Thank you, sir.
Tricia Dasher?
My name is Tricia Rainone, and I have a sixth grader and I have an eighth grader. And I have to just start this meeting by saying, the IEP team at the middle school is incredible, and I almost get choked up when I talk about them. The amount of time that they have spent with my son during this has just been amazing and very helpful. But I have a sixth grader who's at home, very sociable, and is missing out on a lot of things. I have seen him cry. I have shut the computer. I have said, we're watching National Geographic. We're not doing this today. It's been really tough. Obviously, everybody has said some things here tonight, but I've done a little homework myself. I have called Virginia Beach Schools and talked to their COVID expert. I have called Chesapeake Schools, and I have talked to their COVID expert. And I have called Newport News, and I have spoke with someone a little closer to home for us. Chesapeake Schools have the three foot with the mask. They have an advisory committee, but they have a team of panel of epidemiologists, doctors, and nurses, and I believe there are local panels of health experts that they use to guide them. Everyone I have talked to said that it is merely guidance for the Virginia Health Department. They do not go on the Virginia Health Department. They do, the World Health Organization, the American of Pediatrics is huge, and they use those primarily to set their standards. But they also have mitigations that are obviously with the mask and the hand washing and so forth. But they have opened their schools, and when I have talked to them, and I have told them that I'm from Pecosin, a very small school system, and this is what we're facing, and you actually, not that they criticize, but on the other end, they're just like, really? Like, they only wish they had that problem because they have thousands of kids. What is our graduating class? So, it can be done. I mean, it really can. It's got to be, I know that we have a lawyer apparently that's telling us that we need to follow for lawsuits and so forth, but I don't know if we need another attorney or we just need to come to the table again. It's happening. They're doing it. They're making it possible, and they are merely guidelines. I have heard that from three school districts. It is merely guidelines what's in place. We have a situation where our middle school is, you know, being remodeled, we're in trailers. If there's anybody that has a situation, we have one that can be looked at differently. We really do. It can be done. And all you have to do is just spend some time and call them. That's what I did, a full day. Got on the phone, just made some phone calls, and they were very nice. Michelle Price is in Newport News. She has, basically, they do go to the Virginia Health Department, but they also look at other CDC guidelines, the ones that I just went through, World Health Organization, and they also have a team of doctors that they get a lot of information from, and those are the guidelines set for the numbers, the, obviously, the number of cases rather. So, they're making it possible. They have small groups. They have Plexiglas. They have kids in that are struggling reading. She said, you know, we do have a lot of small tables set up with the, I guess that they're kind of divided Plexiglas, and they're definitely within six feet of each other, but they're learning. So it can be done. We can get some Plexiglas. We can take some funds. I don't know how much we're getting for the summer academy, but if that's the amount of money, let's take that money and do some things now to get some more space.
Thank you, ma'am.
To get these kids done. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I really appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else, Ms. Reimers? Okay. Ms. Sheila, would you please walk us through the agenda?
Yes. The consent agenda includes the approval of financial reports, the approval of personnel action, the authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with the request, the approval of the minutes of January's regular meeting and work session.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Ms. Reimers, call for a vote, please.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheila?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And other matters to consideration, consideration of approval of proclamation for National School Breakfast Week and Career and Technical Education Month. Career and Technical Education provides Pecosin students with career pathway for post-secondary education and workplace readiness in global economy. Through CTE, students gain experience in practical and meaningful applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, thereby improving the quality of their education. This year's theme that we saw earlier tonight is Celebrate Today on Tomorrow. It demonstrates the crucial role that career and technical education plays in readying our students for successful careers. National School Breakfast Week, studies have shown that access to nutritious programs such as the National School Lunch Program and National School Breakfast Program helps to create a strong learning environment for children and helps improve children's concentration in the classroom. Students who eat a complete breakfast have been shown to make fewer mistakes and work faster in math exercises than those who eat a partial breakfast. And I thought this was very interesting. Children who fail to eat breakfast, whether in school or at home, are more likely to be overweight breakfast on a daily basis. So do I have a motion to approve those two proclamations? Second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments there? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheila?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Next item is communication.
Final thing, Mr. Chairman. As many of you may know, this month is School Board Appreciation Month, and I just want to tell you from a personal level, and I think I speak for this community when I say thank you for all the hard work you guys put in. And I've worked with a lot of school boards over the years. I've been at this for thirty years now, and I've never met or worked with a school board who's more caring and connected with their community than this one. To an individual, each of you care deeply about this community, and I realized that the very first time we met, and I just want to thank you for welcoming me to Pecosin and for all the hard work you put in and dedication to the kids and their families. It's much appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Cassidy, you're up.
Thank you. Pecosin Primary School wishes everyone a happy Valentine's Day. Our counselor, Ms. Vandevere, created a month-long kindness calendar for our staff and has worked with our VTSS team to put together a kindness letter exchange. Ms. Vandevere has also provided student activities for our classes to encourage kindness during Kindness Week. Our kindergarten registration for the 2021 through 2022 school year has opened. Parents of kindergarten-age students should go to our school website to begin the registration process online, call the primary school with registration questions. Our IPOP preschool program is also accepting applications for the 2021-2022 school year. Please call the Office of Student Services at the elementary school for information. Thank you for supporting Primary School. Pecosin Elementary School is celebrating the month of February by participating in activities that have to do with kindness. Students in each class have made a kindness quilt with pictures of what kindness means to them. The virtual classes made kindness quilts with slides that are highlighted on the monitors at the school entranceway. Staff are participating in a "You've Been Hugged" activity where they secretly leave a small gift for another staff member, and that staff member selects someone they would like to surprise with a hug. The library is up and running at Pecosin Elementary School. The most exciting addition to what our library staff is doing is that now virtual students check out books and pick them up at Pecosin Elementary School. Check out the website for more information. PES is participating in a fundraiser to purchase more individual PE equipment. This way, students can use outside for recess. The classes have been very limited to what the students can do at recess due to following the CDC guidelines. Students are hoping that many more balls, jump ropes, and other equipment can be purchased to use as the warm spring weather arrives. We want to help grow healthy bodies and minds. Pecosin Middle School is conducting parent information nights for parents of rising sixth, seventh, and eighth graders this month. Topics covered during these events include course information and registration process. PMS school counselors have been busy conducting classroom lessons focusing on career exploration through the social studies classes for all PMS students. Sixth-grade students review career clusters by participating in a cahoot and engaging in career interest self-assessment. Seventh-grade students were introduced to the components of an academic and career plan and were tasked with identifying two career clusters of interest to start building their individual. Eighth graders further their academic career plans by taking an interest assessment, exploring post-secondary options, and researching possible career paths. PMS students will have the opportunity to have their school taken this week by Candid Color. Students attending in-person learning will have their pictures taken Thursday and Friday during the school day, and Pecosin Online families have sent a link to make an appointment for Saturday, February 20th, at Pecosin Elementary School. These pictures will be used in the PMS yearbook this year, and we hope to capture everyone. The Pecosin High School Bulls are off and running into the second semester, both in and out of the classroom. Students are engaged in meaningful learning experiences across the curriculum. For example, students in psychology explore the relationship between memory and stress, while students in English 12 examine the classic path, play, Macbeth. Additionally, we launched our partnership with the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles this past month, and students can now complete their permit exams at PES, an opportunity that will be offered monthly. While the current school year is in full swing, we are also preparing for the 2021 through 2022 school year. Our counselors hosted a virtual information session for families of rising ninth-grade students. The full presentation is available on our website for any families who may have missed it. Our students have completed their online course registration, and our school counselors are meeting with students and families to review their selections and plan for post-secondary success. Our Islanders are also excelling in their extracurricular activities. Our National Honor Society students are painting and hiding rocks to bring smiles throughout the city, as well as joining with our Key Club and Leo Club to make messages for dignity for the aged throughout the month. Students are continuing to meet with postseason success in Season One sports, and Season Two sports have done tryouts and practices. We wish all of our Islanders much success in the classroom, in extracurricular activities, and in the community. Thank you.
Ma'am. Mr. Freeman?
I'd like to thank our speakers that came out tonight to speak. I pretty much agree with everybody, and we're working on it. I'll be better and faster than maybe you lose it to tonight. Mr. Henchy, you're dead on. We need the arts. Whatever we can do to accelerate that as well. I'd like to congratulate our boys' basketball team on a phenomenal season. I think they went farther this year than they ever have in the history of the program, so kudos. And something else that, I don't know that it was overlooked or not, but because of the restrictions we have, we weren't able to celebrate it properly or as good as we normally would have, and that's we have several athletes who have signed with colleges, and they've kind of missed out on their signing ceremonies. And that's, I want all y'all to know out there that those of you who have signed, we are proud of you. We're glad you're going on to college, and you represent Pecosin well. If things are allowed, we'll have a proper signing ceremony for you in the future.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you. Want to congratulate Ms. Hessel for seniority. And, you know, just like the speaker said, you know, their guidelines, you know, we took the VHSL guidelines and made it our own. We need to, you know, I want to thank the speakers for speaking tonight. Want to thank all the presentations tonight.
Had a few conversations with parents the last few weeks, a lot of social media talk as well. I think we've probably all seen that, if you're looking at all, if your eyes are open. Quick story, though. This last, or I guess two weeks ago now, I had my first lawyer in my law firm test positive for COVID. We got through a lot of months here without any problems that are firm, and then we had one of her guys test positive. His mother tested positive first. She's probably around my age, and then her mother, who was older, also tested positive. And, you know, what we did was kind of what we're doing here. I realized at that moment, you know, I'm not making the rules anymore. So, guess you made the rules in my life, the judges. So, we called our local judges, who have to be, you know, want to identify ourselves as having been in contact with somebody who has the disease, or has the virus. He basically said, you know, see the CDC. When they're happy, I'm happy. See you later. So, you know, I didn't know my firm at that point, somebody else making the rules. I could say no to the judge, you know, with a gesture and a face, all sorts of things, but it wouldn't have been any good. Went back in the courtroom after these things, and it was a big research project for us to get from, you know, the thirty to the fourteen to the seventy testing and this and that, and, you know, it was a big matrix of stuff. Couldn't see clients for ten days and so on and so forth. Well, we got all through it, you know, and we did all that. The thirty-two-year-old lawyer had no symptoms, but he was tested positive. His mom had some symptoms. It was a little bit harder for her, but she got through it fine. Grandma had a rough time. She didn't go to the hospital, though, but she did it for grandma. We're doing what we're doing for grandma, because little kids don't get this virus. We know that. The grandmas do. And that's what we have to do here, is watch out for the entire community. We have a seventy-three percent split here in Pecosin about, if I'm getting the numbers right, Mr. Tilla. And that's good, but we can't ignore the thirty percent either, so. Saying where we sit, we have to keep, you know, both in our views. It's part of our job to keep both of our views. I think we've done the best that we can do with this. So, it just takes some time. It doesn't heal everything. Time doesn't heal everything, but it does a lot, and the patience we've had to put on this is a lot, too. I'm a parent. I'm also a board member. Guess I'm a lawyer, too. Liability bothers me if we were to go that route. So, we have got to do the best we can do as fast as we can do it. I think we started well, Mr. Tilla. Thank you for that. Old move up front. We were, I think, the first on the peninsula to go in the classroom at all. Again, we're doing as fast as we can. I want it tomorrow. But just like with the judges, if I raise my, if I'm, you know, I can do this all day and pounding, it isn't doing any good. So we just have to do the things we've got to do and the pace we can do them, and we'll all do well. So I just want to thank, this is a long story to say this, parents, thank you for your patience, for your understanding that we are doing this as fast as we can. We're actually more with you than we're not, but we just have a job that you're here that's slower than we want to do it. So thank you for your patience. Thanks, sir.
I agree with you completely. Absolutely, completely. We definitely want to get all of our kids back in school. We do. Just like way, board member, parent, I'm also a nurse, so I get it, and I see how the numbers are, and we're trending in the right direction. I do want to give kudos to the entire staff. I mean, eighty-five percent is a clinician. That's a pretty great stat. That's awesome to be able to do that. So I can't wait to get a second vaccine in. Thank you all for speaking. We are bowing clear. Ren? Ren? So, thank you all.
Ms. Sheila? Yes, I also want to thank the speakers today who have brought their heartfelt concerns to us. We, we really do want to get our kids back in school. I, I agree with you, I cannot know how bad it is, but I can imagine, because I have a son and a daughter. I also want to thank Cassidy Spakes for her inspirational words from Victor Hugo in both French and English. I was very impressed. Um, the word or comment of a single person can change the course of your life. That just is very meaningful. Thank you very much. And I want to thank, uh, Dr. Fox and Ashley Ryer for leading the ongoing contact tracing efforts, and all of the staff for everything that we do to keep us, uh, going as fast as we possibly can to get us out of this awful situation. Thank you.
Um, speakers, y'all did an amazing job tonight. Some great, uh, parents come in. Understand the emotions can, can get elevated, that is expected, uh, we don't take it personally. We want to hear from you, so thank you so much for your time. I know this boy's face doesn't reflect it, but I am, and always have been, extremely rebellious by nature. So my knee-jerk reaction to all this is to take these recommendations into the office of the CDC, P D H, whoever, and just right there, and do our own thing, and let the chips fall where they may. That is, that is how I'm wired, okay? Uh, so, but then, to Mr. Holcomb's point, you have to reel yourself in, and it's not about me, it's not about how I feel, it's not about, um, me acting out my rebellious nature, it is about making decisions that are going to keep whoever we send all the kids home to, taking care of them. Who are we sending them home to? Who's, who is in the, so we have to think about the whole picture, and that complicates things significantly. It really, um, uh, you know, we want to go this way, and then we're knocked back in that direction. The most trying, uh, ten months that I've ever had on school, I've been on school board, this is my ninth year, Ms. Reimers, six is chair. I don't know how that happened, uh, I think it was, it seems like yesterday, but this has been hands down the most complicated, complex, uh, issue that we have ever had to deal with. We have had some, you know, conversations, and it goes all over the place, it really does, but we have to really reel ourselves in, all of those emotions, rational decisions about what's best for the entire community, not this group, that group, you know, these higher community. And it has really been a challenge, so I appreciate y'all coming out, I really. Emails and the phone calls and the conversations, those are meaningful. Take it seriously, so thank you very much, um, and we'll continue to do the best that we possibly can. Uh, when we first made this decision, I told Mr. Tillet, I said, there's a sixty-six point seven percent chance, or, or we are going to upset sixty-six point seven percent of the population of Pecosin, because we only had three choices. It was bring them back like we always do, keep them home all the way, or do a hybrid. And, and lo and behold, the emails that we got, it was, uh, third of them were yee-haw, and two-thirds of them were, what do you think you're doing? It was point on. So, um, but, but we are coherent, we talk, we communicate, and we do our absolute best to make decisions based on what's best for the entire population. And, uh, if it was up to me, I'd wave a magic wand, and everybody would be on the school bus tomorrow morning at six-thirty, a hundred percent of them, because it is the healthiest place for them. They do miss out on those social things, um, and, and it's just, it's just the best place for kids. So, I promise you that we're taking it seriously, and that we're doing our to get back to some sort of normalcy, but anyway, so that's comment number one. Comment number two, Ms. Reimers has just been, um, nominal, continues to be phenomenal. We have a, something for you, and I think we'll put them right here for you, but on behalf of the board, I would like to thank you for your work, uh, dedication and for your service, uh, for the school board and, and the scenes that makes things happen, so we just truly appreciate you all. Thank you very much, ma'am. Do we have any material for board review?
We do not.
And with that, we will adjourn.